Can we do the reorganize first?
Pardon me?
You can organize first.
Yes. Um, first thing we're gonna do is reorganize. We're looking for someone to take over the secretary's position.
I would be delighted to do that.
So, do we have a motion to nominate William?
I will nominate William for secretary.
To replace you need it, because otherwise when you look at the minutes, you're...
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I abstain.
Motion carries. Four in favor, one abstain. William abstain. Okay. Minutes.
You have the one set of minutes. Didn't find them anywhere else in the folder, but I'd ask you to make copies. There's two.
Am I the only one with the set here?
You have two sets.
Yep, but I'm the only one with them.
You're the only one holding them.
So, I'm gonna ask, first of all, has everybody looked at the Monday, June 28th meeting minutes? If you haven't, would you like to review them?
I have.
You've seen them? Yeah. I have a set here. Pass it back that way.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 28th minutes as...
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Has everybody reviewed the Monday, August 9th meeting minutes?
I have.
I have.
Yeah. I'm all set.
Everybody's all set?
I'm in for motion to approve the August 9th, 2021 minutes as...
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
I abstain. I wasn't there. You were there.
Okay. Motion carries. Four in favor. William abstains. All right. Our PV PC contract update. It was sent to Chris for signature.
I think the original is there.
I thought I signed this.
Yeah, there's one with your signature on it.
There should have been two. With my signature. So, William, can you fill me in what you were told?
Um, well, you signed it and the next step would be for Chris Martin to sign the part that tests that we have the money to pay for that. He seems to think, after talking with Kathy Leonard, he seems to think there is not enough money in there. So, you have the one copy you signed there, right?
I've got two copies, Jason.
Okay. So, Jason?
So, the last financial report I had, which we have plenty in the account cover, was back in June. And it looks like we had a balance of $9,186.
Nine thousand? And the contract's for $7,500, so we didn't spend any money.
But this was Jason's?
That's from, as of June.
Didn't we do another allotment to PV PC for about $1,500 between June and now?
Uh, 1,054.
1,054?
Yeah, 1,054 on June 28th. That one was approved. So, subtract that one, and we still have.
Still have the 1,054.
Yeah.
So, how do we go about figuring this out?
I can meet with Kathy this week and find out what they're seeing that we're not on this report.
So, you're gonna...
I'll find out, yes.
You're gonna follow up with Kathy or...
Yes, yep.
Jason, who did you receive those copies from? From Steve, man, to Chris, or Kathy?
No, they're usually in the folder here, also we get them from Kathy.
All right. So, you report back to us at our next meeting?
Yep.
And I'll have more on the billing that wasn't... After we said to go ahead and bill a couple of those big projects, they weren't done because Steve asked that question as to whether we had had informed the applicant at that time that we were gonna use any money. They had an escrow to pay for what they owe, and then we'd be giving them the difference, unless they specified otherwise when they gave us the money. Some did, some didn't. So, he was asking that question, and I said, "Can't we just put a letter in with the bills saying, 'There you go'?" And he hasn't answered, so...
Okay, well, maybe we get some follow-up on that too when you...
And he's the one that has to pull the funds out of the escrow.
Right, correct.
Yeah. So, I sent him another email this morning following up. The other one was back in February.
I don't understand why all of a sudden this... What do you want to say?
Yeah.
Well, at the very least, it should... The talent of approval, money is the higher...
Right.
Well, we'll just wait back to hear back from Jason.
Yeah, so I'll have an update at the next meeting, and Jason will have his sort of next step.
Okay. Next on the agenda, um, the decision from our 17 Level Road site plan approval.
So, we need a motion to approve...
Approve the approval?
Approve the approval, so everybody can sign. So, everybody will be... I need to sign two copies.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the site plan approval letter document, so that it can be signed by all members present except for Will. She was not here when the decision was...
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, tonight, I didn't see what that was for.
Yeah. Approve the site plan approval by a site plan approval for...
17 Level Road.
17 Level Road. So, it can be signed by all members present except for Will, because he said he wasn't here anymore. The decision has moved. Okay, so, and Jason, you seconded?
Yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four. William abstains. Okay. Next on the agenda, discussion, Tony Hannah, Solar Eastern Street.
Tony, did you sign in?
Just signed in, yep.
Oh, no, Tony.
Is he here? Thank you for having me. It's actually Tori Hannah, but very close. My name's Tori Hannah. I work with a company called Davisville Development. I've got a few handouts. Is that okay to pass out?
Absolutely.
I might be one short, so if there's...
Well, if you do, I printed off a copy of this.
Oh, fabulous.
So...
Thank you, you're welcome.
I hope you saw Kathy had sent that. But it was late this afternoon.
Thanks.
It was 8:00.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
There are some things I need to...
My colleague Andy is here as well. Yeah, so, um, I'm coming out from Pittsfield, Massachusetts. I'm a former planner myself, land use planner. Been a part of the American Planning Association for 10 years now, I'm proud to say. I'm an AICCP planner, so I very much respect the work you guys do. I was on the other side of the table for many years, actually. But we're a renewable energy developer. We mostly focus on solar projects, solar plus battery projects, and we're just getting out into standalone battery projects. We do a couple neat kind of solar products. One is a rooftop elevated canopy, and another one is, the subject of this meeting, it's an agricultural canopy. So, I'll kind of explain a little bit more about what that is, but really, we were invited here tonight to kind of ask a question about a zoning clarification related to one of the sections I'll get to in zoning, but we're looking at, we've been working with the DeWitt family for almost half a year, maybe a full year, on a solar project in one of their back parcels. And this project is an agricultural solar canopy. It's approximately a 10-acre project, the size that that yields is 1 megawatt. If you're, we could kind of talk a little bit more about the footprint there, but yeah, the purpose of the meeting, or my goal here, was to seek bylaw clarification for a path forward for this project. I'll give you just a quick overview of the project, and then I thought we could discuss the bylaw and the interpretation. So, if you flip to the second page, this is just a 3D rendering of what the project would look like. It's a little bit zoomed out, so if you scan, if you go to the next page, you'll kind of see what I'm talking about here. This is an elevated 10-foot-high, what's called, single-axis access tracker project. So, these are actually screws that you see in, if you're all pulled this way, this one on the same page, literally. These are called racking systems, and they screw right into the soil, literally screw in, just above the frost line. And then these panels are fixed to 2x1 in a portrait alignment. And what they actually do is track the sun east-west. So, the sun rises in the east, they're ticked a little bit, 30%, and then they follow the sun to a 30% tilt on the western side. It's kind of a neat tracking. There's dual-axis trackers, you've probably seen those. They're the big square ones that are on a single pole. Those dual-axis track the sun east-west, but also north-south as we move from summer to winter.
And these just do east-west?
These are just east-west, yep, so like, single axis. If you scroll, if you go to the next one here, this is a little more zoomed in and from a different angle of this field we're talking about, you can see we put in some examples of like, trackers. And then go to the next page. I think it's the next page. You'll get a real zoomed-in look at what these things, what these things look like. If you go to the next, and that's just for visualization purposes, but let me just explain the design real quick. I have an overview of design page here. These canopies are called canopies because they're elevated 10 feet, as I mentioned, above grade. They're actually spaced really far apart, 20 feet, to be precise, apart, so that you can fit farm apparatus in between the roads. Typically, fixed-tilt ground mount, fixed-tilt meaning it's stationary, it doesn't fall to the sun. Those are typically like 12, 10 to 12 feet space. So, these are almost double that space. And the purpose is to basically allow for farm equipment. We've shown a hay tractor, a tractor with hay trailer behind it in this one. So, what we're proposing here is the DeWitt family has basically agreed to continue to farm in and under the solar array, which is a requirement from Mass D O E R. The new program, the current program right now, solar incentive, is called SMART, if you guys are familiar with that. It was called SREC in the past. But they've agreed to farm in and around the array for 20 years. They're likely gonna do hay, but they can do any crop as allowed, and that's allowed under the Mass D O E R program. We are required to basically be allowed to do this type of project, to report annually on that. So, we have to show agricultural sales and yield every single year. The third bullet point is the spacing allows for the shading criteria that the state requires to be met. And that basically, that requirement is that 50% of the land underneath the solar arrays gets sunlight. So, you can't cover more than 50% of the target parcel. So, our 10 acres, there'll be five acres or less covered with these single-axis trackers. Does that kind of make sense? Second last thing here is the solar panels track the sun's movement, east-west. That gives us more production. We can produce more energy because it's following the sun, generating photovoltaic electricity. But secondly, it also meets the SMART guidelines. It's more expensive, these are more expensive than your traditional, just fixed-tilt solar arrays, which you see around Western Mass, but worth it because of these two things I mentioned. And lastly, our project is a 1-megawatt project, so approximately 10 acres. Mass SMART only allows 2 megawatts or under for this solar, this solar agricultural type type project. So, we need that part. So, onto your zone. Randy's zone, this is the slide I'm referring to. Section 5.93A2, basically reads like this. Large-scale solar mounted photovoltaic installations shall not be allowed on important agricultural farmlands, as defined by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, as those soils bound to important farmlands, verse 02, 7 CFR. That includes prime farmlands, unique farmlands, and additional lands of state importance. So, to the right here, I'm showing a partial, their parcel, and in red, kind of where, that's the footprint that we're proposing to occupy, about 10 acres. That falls into farmland of statewide importance later, as the Massachusetts, basically, GIS map shows. You guys are probably familiar with Oliver. That's where I pulled this image from. So, here's our question. We had liaison with the planning board and Kathy a few months back, just kind of checking. Is this, is this project gonna work? And we thought that it would, but our finance team in kind of reviewing this project, we still have a few steps to go with interconnection with utility. As you guys know, that's a huge backbreaker for solar projects, namely because the cost to interconnect these solar facilities, small and large, they're still variable. The feeder that we're connecting to, the circuit, could be saturated and need upgrades. The substation that that runs back to could be saturated and need upgrades. So, there's this exhaustive process the national grid is putting us through and will put us through. We can talk a little bit more about the local cluster study that's going on in town and some others around the town, but there's still steps we need to do to get to that point. But our finance team was basically like, flagged this section of zoning and said, "It appears this may be a red flag in terms of project success." So, the next slide here is just about the Massachusetts SMART regulations. Some of the same language, I don't know if Randy used the language from the Mass SMART guidelines, but it's very similar to what Massachusetts SMART, that D O E R put out, reads like, so if I'm guessing perhaps, Randy used that, some of that language. It actually states that ag solar canopies can and shall be allowed on those type of soils, but only if it's this type of a solar array, only if it's an elevated, spaced-out, agricultural, supportive type project. And I extracted some language that I provided a link to, to Mass SMART. You know, this type of project would fall under what they call Category 1 land use. They divide Category 1 into two types, agricultural and non-agricultural. This one would be agricultural. And it says, "Category 1 agricultural land use may apply to STGUs," that's solar tariff generating units, solar arrays. "Cited on land in agricultural use or important farmland." It says that really only those type of, these elevated canopies are allowed on the soil that the bylaw is seeming to say, "No large scale is allowed." So, that's kind of the crux of what we wanted to ask about. I provided some additional slides. I'm sorry it's so small here. I need to provide in actual visible format, but this is the actual language describing what constitutes an agricultural solar tariff generating unit, basically, an ag STGU. And it says, I just extracted some of this stuff, so it's a little bigger. It can't, it is this, it can be this type of a generating unit, but it can't interfere with farming operations. It has to strike a balance of farming and electrical generation. It has to be elevated to allow for continuous agricultural use. You have to report to the state annually. You have to show them that you're actually creating income with an agricultural product. And then, yeah, it just said that our proposal needs all of the allowances under that, under that specific section, so... Like I said, like agricultural crops constitute an allowable use, hay produce, livestock constitutes an agricultural use. We're seeing a lot of that in Massachusetts, more in New York now, where sheep is kind of the best one because they don't chew the wires, whereas goats do, and cows are, they're larger animals, so they'll actually bump into these things. So, sheep is a real, much more common dual-use livestock, but again, we're proposing hay for a produce, most likely.
What are they, what are they producing there now?
It's hay right now, yep. It's been hay now. That backfield, there was some livestock grazing over the years, but it's almost not fallen into hay. And yeah, just a few more things about the requirement that I bulleted a couple slides ago. Has to be 10 feet or above for the type of array we're proposing, which is again, that tracking type. It could be a little bit lower if it's non-tracking, it'd be eight foot, but we're proposing 10-foot off-grade. Can't shade more than 50% under the land underneath it. That logically is just to allow sunlight, so you can, you know, so you can keep doing crop land, crop, crop. And then again, we're proposing, we're within the requirement of map size. They just don't let you do these things at much bigger scales, so it's gotta be 2 megawatts or under, we're proposing 1 megawatt. So, conclusions, I just, you know, we were hoping to see, kind of laid out these steps. I think in order of preference, but this is on your table, on your desk, to decide obviously, paths forward, we recognize being, the planning board can give us clearance on proceeding to the, to a special permit, a formal special permit through you. And basically by determining that a project meets like, the intention of the bylaw, that may fall into the building inspector as the zone, you know, the code enforcement officer in Massachusetts, but we haven't been TCing him, and we haven't heard back on that determination yet, so I don't, I don't know if that is you guys or them. The second path forward could be a zoning language change. So, we actually would change the language to say, "Large-scale solar can't be on prime ag land or land of statewide importance unless it's this elevated agricultural canopy that the state is incentivizing." Third path forward, I would imagine, could be a variance from that section, from the ZDA. So, in parallel with the formal special permit application to the planning board, we'd ask for a deviation from that, from that section. So, for path number two, zoning language change, we propose just this language for consideration. It's the same section you have, I wrote out here, but it just added, unless they are agricultural solar tariff generating units, which SMART calls STGU, as defined by Mass SMART. And actually, we may want to change that to Mass D O E R, because the department that institutes SMART is D O E R, Department of Energy Resources. But you get the kind of the gist of it there, so... Yeah, so thank you so much for your time. Is there any questions?
Yeah, just, I'm just letting you pause for a minute, if you don't mind. Ken? Are these, do these require special permit or just site plan approval?
Your solar permits require special permit, unless it's over a...
Unless it's over the... So, so, special permit is...
So, yes, we identified that it would need to go through a special permit process, assuming that one, the code enforcement officer come, that that would be the rule.
When was that language introduced into our bylaw?
That? I think that was done at the town meetings.
That was done on the floor as an amendment?
At least, with regards to the, with regards to the farmlands.
That was not a recommendation from the planning board? That was, that was...
I, from what? I believe that was...
We can't change the zoning language, no. Because that requires a special town meeting. That's not gonna happen until next year. So, that's kind of out of the question unless you've got a long time to wait.
Well, you can see we rank that as number two in the priority because, understood, I mean, that's gonna take a super long time. I think that it's a reasonable request, but we have to educate, you know, the whole town on why we're adding that language, ensure that they really understand that that was D O E Rs, that is the state... Ensure that they really understand that that was DOE, that is the state's goal of this agricultural canopy. They want to place it on, they want to allow that and only that on lands of statewide importance and prime agricultural. That's why it's in there.
And I'm kind of concerned that when our changes were approved by the attorney general, that that wasn't caught. As, you know, you may want to think about this, you know, they said the language we had was fine, so...
Yeah, it is concerning.
And it could be the SMART guidelines changed a little bit after that, too.
I don't think so. I think they've been static for quite a while, and it's, it looks like the language from SMART was used for your Granby bylaw. However, that it was that extra language that says, okay, only this type of specific ag canopy can be allowed.
But that wasn't in the, in the SMART one, right?
It is, it is in the SMART one, yeah.
Unless there are agricultural, that's in the SMART one?
Yeah, the language is chopped up a bit, but on slide, give me one sec here. I extracted the exact language, 10, I believe it is. It talks about Category 1 land use. That's, that's an excerpt from the SMART. It's divided into two types, ag and non-ag. Category 1 land use may apply to solar generating units cited on land in agricultural use or important agricultural farmland.
That's a "may," "may apply."
Yep.
That's one of the attorney general's, stick onto, "may."
It goes on to say, "Land in agricultural use includes land that is currently or in the past five years, been enrolled in chapter 61A, the tax benefit program. Of these types of land, the following types of solar facilities are eligible. Ag STGUs."
Yeah, I for one would need to go back to our zoning bylaws and look at them again now to see, because it's been a while, to see how everything meshes here. So I couldn't get a decision tonight.
No, I don't think the board will be prepared to vote or do anything like that.
Didn't expect to, just kind of wanted to educate and just bring this to your attention. I really appreciate Kathy.
I can tell, I can tell you at the last town meet, or the town meeting that this was presented, was not the package that the planning board endorsed to go to town meeting as an article. When it hit the floor, there were many, many amendments made to the, to the article, including setbacks from 100 to 250 feet. That piece that you just described as far as agricultural land, and there was a couple other things that were changed on the floor. So...
So it may have been pulled out at that time, you know, said, "Let's, let's not allow for..."
That's, that's one of the reasons why I'm against having articles amended on the floor before they get, before they get full. It can be brought up and they can kick the article, but it should go back to planning for another hearing for further review. So maybe something like that would have been cause.
So they can be completely vetted.
Vetted, right.
I think that's live start.
One, one question I have, if the DOE are overseeing this, regarding this particular situation, why does Granby or any other community in Massachusetts need a bylaw if they are the ones that enforce these rules?
It's a good question. I mean, I think it goes back to 40A and, and the ability for a community to put special conditions on a project application, a special permit, to make that project adhere to your communities, to your community, you know? Because they don't want to strip you of that power.
I'm not arguing the point with people. My, I guess what I'm saying is, if this is already rule, law, whatever, why are we even we the planning bylaws are messing with it? And if nothing else has changed, other than a simple, it sounds like omission that even the attorney general could pick up on. But, again, that doesn't answer your question, the reason you're here. I think what, before we can do anything, we have to get from the building inspector, code enforcement officer, or if you'd say. We're gonna be, I think, looking to, how you develop a planning commission, Ken? Do we need something?
Yeah, I think, you know, as Hannah said, the building, or the building enforcement officer, would make a determination whether or not it has the muster to go to a special permit. The, looking at the language, I think it's hard to say that he would be, that the applicant would be able to. So more than likely, Phil Plannin, or the town, may be looking at a zoning amendment at the next available time. But I think here, as you said, here from Lake Brays, and I think the determination has been with regards to this application, they go from there. I think the, the discussion about this particular type of solar project, which, yes, he identified that with regard to this microgram that is, that, I don't recall when that was added, but I feel like it was added recently, with regard to the agricultural use. But at the same time, there's always been this agricultural dual-use with solar that has been this type of thing. We, if it was brought up in the planning board meeting, probably that discussion would have happened. However, I think, you know, just regarding the process, regarding the process for 40A, more than likely, the board will be exploring, having a public future to talk about its own power amendment for that specific section. I do think that, if you look at your farm lands in Granby and some of these particular areas, if that is something that property owners want to do, that's probably something to address, you know?
So the way our bylaws sit right now, we would have to waive that particular requirement, because it doesn't have the language unless it's agricultural generating unit, blah blah.
Yeah, I, I have to get a determination from town council on that, to see if that can be waived.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, again, you know, the way that 40A works is, your zoning enforcement officer would make that determination, but I think you're right. If town council, or your town council said, you know, I could see that possibility of it being A, and the zoning enforcement officers, you know, approve that, then you can go to a special permit process, as appropriate based on this, your solar. But, yeah, I think that's a consideration at the moment, that town just needs to further along, and that's the question.
Well, I think that you have a tremendous amount of unanswered questions, whether it be with the town of Granby alone or with National Grid. And how do you proceed? Do you give your answers from National Grid, or do you go through the extensive, going through the town of Granby, with all the permitting and hearings and that kind of stuff? And then find out from National Grid that you've outweighed that hash, and you're not gonna give anything back for it?
You've identified the difficulty of this, this business. I mean, it's just one funds first, you know? All the developer funds we have at this stage are so risky, because we might not get a land use permit from the town, we might not get an interconnection approval from the utility company. So we are kind of on hold right now, because we don't have this answer. So I, I don't know how quickly we could get an answer, but, you know, we, we won't be able to make certain milestone payments with National Grid if we don't know that there's a path forward from a zoning perspective, you know? So we're a little, we're a little, we're a little stuck.
Where, where does the feeds come from? Does that come from five corners?
Yeah, exactly. And that is involved in a cluster study. So there's five or six substations like that one, that have been flagged by ISO New England, which is the transmission operator.
Correct.
Who says, "There's been so much DG, distributed generation activity in these five substations, we want to study the map river." They call that a cluster study. So this project basically is and will be in that cluster study. And ISO New England's gonna tell National Grid, who tells all of us developers who have participated, there's upgrade costs.
Yeah, I, I heard that they were upgrading those transformers down there.
They will, yeah, they will. I don't know exactly what the timeframe is, but we're stuck in that process right now.
That's one of the reasons why they never moved forward with the Tendus Street project. After denial, they didn't, they didn't take it to the deals process, because National Grid didn't have the capacity to take it. But they are, they, they had a five-year plan of upgrading those transformers, is what I was told.
How about Dickinsons?
Dickinsons got in, they're one of the reasons why they're, they're over capacity.
But, I mean, we really like the project, because it's gonna help the D W I Ts kind of keep, you know, it's, it's income for them, releasing the land, but they continue to, and they have to, continue to farm it, which it seems like that was the intent of that section of the bylaw, is to not, like, put large-scale ground-mounted solar on good farmland, you know?
So, so Bob made a point, which comes first, you know? If we can get clarification from town council, that we can waive that, I can't speak for the board, but I'm definitely in favor of projects like this, this project or similar projects. I mean, we, there'd have to be a hearing and a public, on its face. It sounds, it sounds good, that you're, you're still being able to farm the property and, and utilize it for farming energy. You know, it's a, I think it's a pretty cool method of making good use of property versus straight-up development. You know, they could, they could put a, you know, was it 10 acres there? They could put a, you know, a 10, a 10-home development in there, too. So there's, there's a lot of upsides to doing these things, to preserve farmland, even though it may not be preserving it in its whole, but in partial. And it's, and again, it's only for, these, these agreements are 20-year agreements. It's not forever. Once you put up a subdivision...
It's forever.
It's forever. So these, these things, I think they're smart. I think, I think they're smart anyway, even if, even if it's not the, this program.
Right, they can't be.
I think they're good ideas. And they're, and they're pushing electricity, electric vehicles. And we don't have enough electricity to...
Right.
To fuel them, so we've got to come up with alternatives. They want to get, get away from fossil fuel and, and go to, you know, these smart electric vehicles, and they've got to come up with a different process of creating energy.
I mean, well said. I mean, we agree with you, obviously. We like these dual-uses, whether it's on rooftop or it's continuing to allow for farming. And it's gonna be tax revenue for the town. Our asset's taxable. And that land continues to be farmed, I think that's a really good win-win. And we're generating, like you say, locally sourced electricity that's renewable, that we need more of, for the EV push and all these other things.
So if, if that is taxable, does that mean it has to come out of 61A?
Yes, it would come out of 61A.
But what if we use it for agriculture?
That's, well, they will not get, they will not get a 61A exemption for the area that we're putting our panels on.
Taxes.
Yep, so the town will get those rolled-out taxes. So you won't get a tax exemption for where our panels are.
So 10 acres, it's five acres, comes out as 50.
Exactly, yep.
And that would have to be done before we do anything, because it has to go through the select board, blah blah.
Which is a...
You take one step forward and two steps back.
That's a pretty...
It's a lot of, it's a lot of thoughtful, so if I wanted to come and just broach the idea and see if we could get clarification on one of the three paths, or maybe there's more paths, I, you know, that we did not see.
I would, let us, give us a couple weeks, we'll see if we can do some homework between now and our next meeting. Get some sort of clarification, bring it back to the board, then we can vote on whether or not that's something we would agree upon waiving, if we're allowed to waive it, based on town council's recommendation. And then we could, we could send them a letter stating that you, you may or may not have, you know, got through that first hurdle.
That'd be outstanding. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Really appreciate it.
If, if we do move forward, there is, this is the line. I don't see any fencing around this. And the, the question that I have is, these larger arrays, all have, what, a seven-foot fence around them? Six, six, seven. I think, I think they're probably seven-foot because of the...
The size of the...
The electrical area.
But that would have been vetted through with the site plan.
Oh, you understand that, but...
That's also part of the bylaws, it's in the bylaws, the...
I, I believe fencing is in the bylaw, and we are required to fence this asset for insurance purposes on our side, but also electrical code.
Right.
The state electrical code is gonna ask us to fence it, so we would fence this thing, and it would be under lock and key, that the W I T family would also have. So, so they can get in and out of it for the farming that we're packaging into this project. So we would, we would, we would fence it.
You answered that question.
Yeah. That was a good question, right?
Okay. Both give us, give us a couple weeks here, till I, see if we can get some clarification. Does anybody else have any questions about it?
No, gotta revisit bylaws and see what we got there.
And Miles Witt apologized, he was gonna come tonight and show his support, he was out of town, so. Thank you for making time tonight, buddy, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any more discussion on that?
No. You okay?
Yeah.
Lot of questions.
Okay, let's jump to review action items.
What are we doing?
We're gonna jump to review any action items?
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Do you want to see why Dakota's here?
Yeah, Dakota's, they're the plan.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna recuse myself for that.
Oh, okay.
I wanna jump right to this and...
Proposed private events bylaw discussion.
Yeah, I'm excusing myself from that as well.
Okay, so, let me get back to the minutes here, and over the... I don't know if we had anything.
I didn't think we did.
There's nothing in the last minutes, and everything else was done, so no open action items.
Wow. Actually, Jason's got the hearing, so.
You need a little...
We were just testing my...
Uh, let me see something, before I go. All right, so with that being said, I'm going to recuse myself for the next two topics, and I'm going to leave the building. Turn the meeting over to Vice Chair, Mr. Sheen. I'll leave, huh? And, well, you can, I'm gonna leave, so you can lock up.
Yeah.
All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, Dakota, what can I do for you?
We're just looking for approval, signing the GI. Everything I say, I have traction in hand. I got Bill, I got a letter that she requested the last meeting, for a project, I mean, for all practice, I do. We're just waiting for a sign-off, three minutes.
Wasn't that all signed?
The A and R?
Yeah.
No, we were waiting on clarification as to chapter 61, it was out of chapter 61. I don't think we had an meeting since that was determined. We had a letter from the select board, that was actually August 7th, saying they had, they weren't interested. So we had to wait for this anyway.
Mm-hmm. All right. Where are the plans and the bylaws?
That's a very good question. Does Kathy put... That's a very good question because Kathy couldn't find them at her place. And she looked real quick, and you looked.
I looked through it too, Jason, right?
Yeah.
They couldn't find it. However, we could vote on this. So we know whatever we're pending finding the bylaws. You know they're here somewhere because Kathy wouldn't have put it on the agenda if she didn't have everything. But they came here for the first meeting. And Dakota, I believe you were on by phone at that time.
Yeah.
And I didn't keep track of it, so. Hopefully they didn't get mixed up with the conservation stuff. So they want to vote on, I mean, that was the only question really that we had. My, my question was, the A and R needed a date on it, but it has no date on it. So it's like, when did you do this?
Right, so that was left blank because if we got, we, so when I talked to Lisa from the survey department, she knew this was blank, make sure it's in there.
Really?
If we needed that, well, Jason's wanting to start their meeting, so.
Well, that's okay. You can still.
Those checks are always.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't approve it without a date on it.
We're not going to date it. We weren't having to date it.
But we needed that on there. Oh, you're right, okay.
So did the board vote on it to?
No, we, well, actually you were, we just came to the same thing. You just recused himself and you took over. And we were waiting, we had a question on if it was still chapter 61 and that it needed, the application needed dated. And we had the plans with the original application there. And it just needed to be dated, but we're not the ones to put the date on there. And we just got the clarification, the paperwork from the select board that they did at their August meeting.
So after I left you guys, we, I kind of built a plan. They had the Senator proposal in for intent. Went through the select board. Select board approved it. It was 120 days. And then obviously that was on the 17th when they signed it.
Right, and stated the, well, it stated the, yeah, 17. So.
So the unknown at the time of the first meeting was if we actually, if that property was taken out of chapter or whatnot.
Right.
So Kerry was able to obtain the information that it wasn't hot when the home was originally thought it was. So we then took the 4.76 acres out of chapter nine. Went into the process to be approved in the select board now to come back so we could be convenient.
And that's exactly the.
Same thing with the two sub-boards, one bathroom.
Yeah, but the plans, this, this has never happened before. That means the plans said.
Because I know at the meetings between, I know we came up with some idea. We get cost living or. Just concerning, I did ask Kathy yesterday in this interview.
Yeah, she called me. She had already left for the day and, I mean, I talked to Kathy. She said we put vote on it tonight. And just pending how do we put that? Pending the. Re-. Pending the, hmm, finding the paperwork.
Obtaining?
Yeah.
Well, if memory serves correctly, the lots all met the zoning bylaws.
Right.
Yep.
Four lots.
Correct.
Four newly.
So it's five altogether.
So it's five, right.
And we have the right amount of money now.
No, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the A and R for the five lots on East Street pending receipt of the site plans, is that what it comes?
Of the plans.
Of the plans and application.
Can you say received as in you have already received them and you can't find them? Or are you getting another set?
Well, Kathy can look tomorrow. If she can't find them, then we've already looked here. Then we'll need another set, which is really bizarre because, like we have them.
No, I know, of course we need to be out there.
And, and it's usually no problem with leaving them here. Kathy picks them up the next day and takes them back, so. So my motion was to approve the A and R for the five lots on East Street pending the plan, pending receipt. Of plans and application. And that's all, okay?
Sure. Let me second.
I'll second you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 40, James, or generally keys. Maybe we'll know something tomorrow as to whereabouts of the, of the plans.
But we should know one way or another tomorrow. Have Kathy call you or contact you tomorrow. After she looks around, okay?
And then as far as the signatures go, would all of us be willing to go down to see Kathy? So you're not leaving and.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah. As soon as they surface, we can all just make appointments with Kathy to go over there and sign it.
Awesome.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, does the board want to discuss the proposed private event bylaw?
Well, I think we should postpone this till later in the year because in order to get it in on this, this next special town meeting, September 20th, we would have had to get it to the select board the 17th or the 19th of August. And we didn't have enough people for formal implementation, so.
Right.
But nothing's going to happen until next year.
I would agree.
So I would suggest postponing it until later.
Postponing it indefinitely? Well, we don't have a definite.
Right, right.
Time, so.
Okay, so postpone until the, well, we postponed it until we find out when the next May is going to be the next town meeting. So if we get it done.
Well, we have to find out if the select board is going to take additional stuff to the town.
Yeah, so they might pump ours and that again. But if we get it done by the end of the year, this year, then we'll be ready. Like, and we have six months, right, Ken, to. Public, between the public hearing and the actual town meeting. So we could hold on having a public hearing until we know when.
Depends whether it's being considered for, to be on the law.
Right.
But we can still, like, workshop if there's some, you know, additional thoughts. You have a baseline of the information that we looked at and we handled on the hearing. But if there's some additional information or some additional research, then hopefully have a workshop if we know there's a light agenda when, when the, when the. I would probably agree that.
I will say one thing. I received a phone call from a Harris Street resident, not necessarily labor. And this is eventually going to end up in your lap, I think. He and his wife's concerns were alcohol consumption, parking, the amount of traffic on Harris Street, as well as, and he said he did this, I have not done it. He looked at property values regarding private event managers. And he said that they typically resident or neighbor property values diminish. And I don't know, have you heard anything about that, Ken?
Uh, oh, um, I, I, yeah, I guess not ever really heard anything with regards to property values for climate groups to having this type of special use of property. The thing is, you know, the property is not going to be used all the time. They would get a special permit, but then obviously things like a liquor license or, you know, those one-off type permit things that would have to get handled by this, like, or by your other, you know, or help or other, you know, entity. But with regards to property values, I haven't.
There also could be noise too.
That was another one of his concerns, you know? The noise. There, there was a large amount of concerns that he and his wife have as a Harris Street resident. I just kind of highlighted the summary. But there is concern on Harris Street.
No, yeah, no, I, I think that there is, especially, you know, if the board wants to move forward with this, or at least that public hearing. You know, there's going to be a discussion as to how large the property has to be in order for others and the neighbors to feel comfortable with having that type of activity there. So it works elsewhere, but, you know, it's, the minimum we have in the bylaws as it was proposed, I think it was 10 or 15 acres.
I think it's 10.
10, so. So, you know, understanding that, understanding if there were additional stuff that's that we, you know, wanting to control the activity in Harris Street. That's the other, but you're, you're out and those, those are the types of conversations that the board will have when it, when it has a problem. I think, I think the property value, that, that it's, I haven't heard it, but it's, yeah, I'm sure that we can, we can see.
Okay.
So I would.
So we're going to postpone?
Yeah, I would suggest postponing.
Until a later, until, until a later date to be determined.
Okay.
How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Does any board members have anything else?
So, does anything move? No, our next meeting is Monday, September 13th. And the next, just in case people don't know, the next special town meeting, I believe, is September 20th.
2040.
So we're okay with our schedule. Yeah, that's all we have.
Consider, I'll, I'll adjourn.
I'll make a motion to close our planning board meeting.
Give me a second.
Possibly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.